Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Selectmen meeting. Today is Monday, April 20th, 2015. It is now 8:36. First order of business of the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like the Selectmen to 48. Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cindy. Item two, public forum. On any agenda item limited to three minutes. Anybody wishing to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm Susan.
Would you please come up to the table and tell us your name and address?
Sure. It's Susan Merkel Ward, 760 Mulberry Point Road, representing the Guilford Conservation Land Trust. And as you know, we have our 50th anniversary this year, and we're planning a big celebration on June 6th at Olmsted Outlook. And we have a whole bunch of different activities, family-oriented activities. Naples Pizza Truck is going to be there. But we'd like to request permission to have a porta potty kind of on the, you know, where that, I know it's been graded recently, but on the other side of the gravel area there.
Mm-hmm.
For, well, it'll be there from 2:00 to 3:00, so I'm assuming it would be a little bit before 2:00, I mean, 2:00 to 5:00, so three hours, but I'm assuming it'll be a little bit longer than that for them to set up, and then it should be removed that day.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Hope to see you on the 6th.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. D-Day. That's right. All right. Before we continue with the agenda, we have a list of items to add to the agenda. There are two items for use of green, and one was to add the item that this young lady had just requested. So I'm going to ask that we add items 11 dot 7 and 11 dot 8. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. And then we have five appointments and reappointments. I'm going to ask that we add items 18 dot 1 to 18 dot 5. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, now we can continue. Item three, approval of the minutes, 3 dot 1, approval of the minutes of April 6, 2015, which was a regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any additions or corrections? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for approval and a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Karen, I have to abstain because I was, I was representing the board in Pittsburgh. How'd you do? Oh, big, big celebration. Okay. Those Italian families, Joe.
Well, okay. Three in affirmative, one abstention, okay. Item four, Finance Director Sheila Valano receives a monthly report for March. Good morning, Sheila.
Good morning.
Want to start off with revenue, I say?
Sure we will. So 75% of the way through the fiscal year, and we have collected 98% of our revenue bottom line, count revenue, 99.6%. This is probably the best that I've seen it in the years that I've been here, 15 years or so, at this point in the year. So that's really a good sign. Tax collector is, has collected 100% of her budget. There's still taxes that are outstanding for her to collect. Doesn't mean that there's nothing outstanding, obviously, but the main thing is that the budget has been met. And almost all the departments have either exceeded their budget or will make their budget. Revenue looks great. If you look at the state side, the Board of Ed has one payment left, or we have one payment left to receive on the ECS grant. So if we get that, which we will get, we are at 100% without collecting any other revenues. And don't forget for taxes and ambulance fees, we have four months, not three. So we are in a good position with revenue.
So it's safe to say we're going to exceed our revenue budget?
We will exceed our revenue budget.
Okay. Any questions on revenue?
The state, they pay twice a year. That's their standard practice for Board of Ed?
ECS is three times a year. They do 25, 25, and 50, yeah.
Move on to expenses.
Expenses, we are expended obligated at 80.8% versus 79.2% last March. There are a lot of timing issues here. I expect that we won't see any major problems, even in the Public Works, for example, where they have, you know, a lot of overtime. I think it's all going to iron itself out by the end of the year, and we shouldn't, the only, what's popping up here that looks like a problem that's not is insurance, because they are over expended by $98,000. But they're not really, there's just reimbursements that haven't been recorded yet, mostly from the waste transfer station. And actually, that, the insurance line will end up with a small surplus at the end of the year, once we record all of our reimbursements for insurance. We've made all of our four quarterly payments for the liability, the LAP, and the workers' comp. Other than that, I don't see any problems at this point, other than we watch legal fees because of the assessment appeals.
And it's, you've still got a problem in the engineering and public works because of the winter road maintenance.
Yeah, but now I'm working on, and I'll have it for the Board of Finance for tonight, a salary projection. I usually do that in, you know, April or so, because I can kind of get a feel for where we're going to end up, and I usually come pretty close on salaries. So I think the salaries will help us. And even in Public Works, when, you know, when there's people that are on workers' comp or there's, you know, earlier retirements than usual, you can pick up some extra surplus that way that will offset the road maintenance, so.
As far as I know, or to date, New Haven has yet to qualify for disaster relief for the July, July, yeah, right, January 26, 27 storm. Three counties in the state have and could get fee for reimbursement, but we, as a county, have yet to qualify, and I have not heard anything further to that extent.
Well, I did submit $143,000.
Yep.
That would help, but I understand that's probably not likely.
No, and we have to qualify as a county, so the town can seek reimbursement.
Right.
Does it look like the county would qualify, Joe?
We came close to it, and we're searching for more expense, and we try to keep giving them as much as we can.
We did, and I remember you had said that when you went to a meeting, there were some towns that didn't even send in an application, so that's.
Oh, so that.
That hurt.
We asked Public Works to give us what the cost of curb reimbursement would be, and that's the only thing else we can come up with.
Yeah, and we tried.
But who's the judge?
Other towns.
When the curbs were ruined, you know?
Surprise towns wouldn't put in unless they didn't.
It's pretty labor-intensive, just even.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not easy, and so they were just hoping that someone else would.
Do all the work.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we did apply, we did our part. Anything else?
That's all I have on revenue and expenses, if you have any questions.
Any questions for the Finance Director on expenses? Sheila, there's still that one correction that has to be made on communications, on supplies for that $14,000 overage you've got to look into.
And I think we did look into that, and that may be accurate. It may just be, if the communications budget is over in total, we'll have to do a transfer, but I don't think that's going to happen.
Okay. Want to move on?
Sure. We could just take a quick look at medical benefits. Last month, we had that unusual situation where the amount covered by the ISL actually went down from January to February, and it took us a while to get some information on that, but it's correct. It was a Medicare claim that Anthem was fighting, that they believed Medicare should have covered, and Medicare didn't end up covering it. And it's just interesting that it just reduced our amount covered by the ISL, which we actually like to see, that money is covered by the ISL, but that didn't work in our favor, although it did overall, because it's less claims that we have to pay. But we're back up to $729,000 in the amount that was covered by the ISL against the $845,000 premium, so. You know, I think that we made the right decision on the ISL. We will hit that 845. I can almost be sure of that in three more months. But we're still projecting now at a $437,000 surplus. The closer we get to the end of the year, the more confident I feel with my projections.
Good. Any questions on medical?
And then I just, I note, comment on the capital reports, I don't have to say too much, they're pretty self-explanatory, but they're all reformatted based on the Board of Finance's request, and they're all here from the school and the town projects. So they do say February 28th. I worked on them basically through the middle of March, and they're pretty much current in terms of payments. So they're broken down by bond issue, and then the subprojects within each issue.
Great. Any questions, comments? Anything else, Sheila?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Item five, Superintendent Schools, Dr. Friedman, discuss and take possible action to waive the town policy for disposal of town personal property with respect to remaining personal property located in the existing high school. Dr. Friedman, please join us.
Thank you.
Pam, is anyone?
I'm sitting.
Yeah, okay. Joined by our in-house counsel and courtesy manager, Pam Millen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Great, how are you?
I don't see you here much.
So I'm here for the B.C. this morning. We would like to request a waiving of the town policy for the disposal of town property. Essentially, the size of this project makes the town policy unwieldy. I do want to assure the board, however, that the Building Committee is essentially following the spirit of that policy. The B.C., the construction manager, the owner's representative, a move consultant who has now been brought on board, and the demolition contractor will all go through essentially the same steps that the town policy calls for. At this time, we have already catalogued and marked all existing furniture. Any furniture that can be taken from the high school and repurposed in other school buildings has been labeled, and the school district will make those moves on our own. We have a consultant who's working with the project, who will help us to take existing furniture or items that can be repurposed and essentially donate those to other school districts, either within or outside of the country, that need support. And then the demolition company will ensure that all products, all remaining products are disposed of or recycled properly. And in fact, the disposal contractor has rights to resell some of those items. Their ability to do that offsets their costs and benefited us in the bidding process. So essentially, what we've done is we've done everything possible to lower the cost of disposal. We're trying to repurpose as much as possible, either in the town or in other locations, and limit what goes in landfill. Much of what will be disposed is furniture that is 30, 40, and 50 years old. We've looked at it carefully. Furniture existing in other schools is already in better condition. What can be saved and repurposed has been. Pam, I don't know if I hit everything.
I think you did hit everything.
Great.
Yes. And you know, we've hired the move manager as part of the bidding process, and then the move manager turns around and hires the disposal company and the mover. And built into the contract with the move manager, that move manager needs to get three quotes so that he gets competitive pricing. We all get competitive pricing on those two elements. And all that, when the disposal company then is able to get rid of it and get some kind of money back, that is built into the pricing that the disposal company will give us, so we get a benefit there as well.
Okay. Any questions? So you're asking us just to waive the procedure?
Correct.
Okay. Karen?
Do you have any, can you put any order of magnitude on this, understanding that you're talking about a lot of it, which is going to go to landfill, which sounds like zero, but as a value, but, you know, are we talking thousands, tens of thousands?
Yeah, I'd have to get back to you, Gary. I don't have a figure like that off the top of my head. I'm sure we could find out what the disposal contract is, and that would let us know how much money we're talking about, how much of the product, how much of the actual furniture items will end up in a landfill. Like, we might be able to report to you more effectively at the end of the process than at this part, at this stage.
Well, the teachers take from the classrooms what they need going forward, right? So like, whatever.
Right, yeah. I failed to mention that all of the instructional, right, yeah, all the instructional materials, technology components, those are all essentially moving with us to the new high school. So we're not talking about textbooks, instructional materials, laptops, Chromebooks. All of that comes with us into the new school. The bookrooms will be moved in whole. We're talking about 30-year-old tablet desks that have been in the, right, and so those items will, again, they've been inventoried, some of it will be removed by our crew and repurposed in other buildings, but much of it will be left behind, as the new building includes new cabinetry, new fixtures, new desks, new chairs, all of those components.
Dr. Friedman, I've been asked the question, what about a lot of the old, I shouldn't say old, the current machinery in the shop? And I've told a lot of our residents that most of that's going into the new school.
That's exactly right. Yes, most of the technology equipment is being reused, our auto lift, CAD machines, much of the heavy machinery connected to the technology department is being transferred to the new school.
Thank you. Great. Any further questions, comments? Okay, and we're going to need a motion.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen waive the town policy for disposal of town personal property with respect to the remaining personal property located in the existing high school.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Friedman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam. Item six, Fire Chief Charles Herschaff, 6 dot 1, consider and take possible action on a resolution authorizing the first selectmen to sign and execute a document related to the Emergency Management Performance Grant for the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection. Good morning.
Good morning. This is the $11,000 Emergency Management Grant that we've been doing for the past eight years. We just needed a resolution signed by the Board of Selectmen, so we can get the money.
So I'll move that we offer as first selectmen to sign and execute documents related to the Emergency Management Performance Grant from the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection.
Second. There's a second. That motion, and the amount, you'll have is about $11,000. No. Okay. Motion's been made in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We just want to see you walk again, that's why.
Yeah. I am walking.
Okay. Item seven, 7 dot 1, VFW grant project, Russell Campani, Stephen Sporell. Gentlemen, so discuss and take possible action to waive the bidding for the hiring of an architect for the VFW project.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. As we talked about last month, the VFW grant is moving forward. We are to the point where we would like to hire an architect. Russ has been with us for about two years. I went to Russ in the beginning of this process and said, "I need a plan, and I need a budget, and I need some specifications. I have no money." So Russ has generously donated his time up to this point. He's the obvious choice for the architect for this project. He has also given us a fixed-price contract that is in keeping with the times, and I would suggest or request rather that this board waive the bidding requirements for architectural services for the VFW.
Pam? Yes? Please.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, especially coming off last meeting. I've been in contact with OPM, which oversees DSS with this, and what they have said is the contract will be entered into with VFW and the respective contractors, so, you know. The issue is, they are going to rewrite the, it's another contract that was initially in front of you last week, or last meeting, and, because they now understand that we don't own the property, the town, so they have to rewrite some of those provisions. So the way I kind of see the order in which these steps are done is, once we get the revised contract, which is in effect a contract between the town and the state, and what they're saying is, we're going to act as, they use the word facilitator, fiduciary, you know, the role of us is to kind of take care of the money aspect of it and kind of oversee all of that. So, and then I would say, even with your vote today, then what will happen is, then the architect agreement should probably be entered into after we get the revised contract from the state. I'm sorry, finish. That's all right. So it's a little, it's a little strange, but what I also am advising on the VFW is the VFW really should have its own counsel to review the contracts, because we can't act in that role. And in speaking with OPM, that could be a soft cost, which could be reimbursed from the amount that was granted to the VFW. So I strongly recommend that the VFW does that to guard its own interests. My understanding is that there will be a lien on the property, which is in favor of the state, which will be forgiven. It's the amount of the entire amount that they're agreeing to, what is it, the million? Or million four?
Million 347, 546.
Right, right. So, you know, and it will be forgiven over a period of time, you know, 10 years or whatever, to make, to just guard that the money's being used correctly, and that in fact, the VFW, you know, will operate that period of time. So if the state doesn't need a bidding process, and it's not really a town project, why do we have to even waive it? Why can't they just do what they're doing? That is completely, it's a very good question. Because I don't want to set a precedent in something we don't need to do, right? No, it's a very good question. You know, in talking at OPM, it's a little convoluted, because it's not us entering into the contracts, but we're really, I don't like the word, because it's not a legal word, we're this pass-through, and they don't believe that VFW is set up administratively to handle bidding. Right. And we are. So in effect, we're going through a bidding process, but ultimately, it's the VFW and, you know, based on the consulting with the architect, who will decide who to award. It's not even our decision to award. That's what I mean, so why? I know, it's, but, I mean, I had, it's been a, I think there's some confusion at the state level, I mean, quite honestly, because the first contract they gave us between the town and the state had a lot of inaccuracies in it. Right. So now that it's clear we don't own the property, they still would like us to oversee the bidding to help VFW, because administratively, they're not able to. So, you know, all I'm doing right now is just kind of following our policies, which will, you know, benefit, I think. So maybe we do a motion that says we waive the bidding process in keeping with. On behalf of.
Or that we acknowledge that this process is continuing, we're aware of it, but we are not responsible for it.
Yeah, but we're weaving it. On behalf of the VFW. Yeah. As instructed by. Is probably. All right, that's my motion. Karen.
Want to repeat it, please?
No. Can't remember. So we'll move to waive the bidding process. On behalf of. On behalf of the state, as this is sort of where the pass-through organization. Right, on behalf of the VFW, as instructed by. The state, yeah.
I'll second that.
Did you get that all, Karen? Thank you.
I do have eight questions, Joe.
Okay, now, motion's been made, second it, so we can discuss it. Karen?
As you understand the way that, this is addressed to Pam, the contract and the way that you're hoping that it finally comes back to you, we have no responsibility for the work of the architect, the contractors, other than the fact that our building inspector obviously inspects what he's legally required to inspect, but that's not our responsibility to monitor.
That is what has been represented. So now I just have to see if the contract.
Well, we would do that with any building.
The building inspector, but we don't have to, we don't have to monitor the contractors and whether they.
Right, or if there's a breach, you don't get involved.
Whether they breach, that would be.
No, we're not. No, I don't exactly.
That's the VFW's responsibility.
And when the contractor, when we go out to bid on behalf of the VFW, you know, we're not going to prepare the contract to the awarded bidder. That's going to have to be, you know, between the VFW and the contractor. Yet again, that's another reason VFW should really have a lawyer.
So Pam, let's take this a step further, so everybody is clear about this, including myself. In hiring the contractor, the VFW would go hire the contractor directly, or do we have to go through this process?
We're going to go out to bid, the town.
Who's "we"?
The town will go out to bid on behalf of the VFW. Then, as I see it, the VFW and the architect will go over whatever bids come in, and they will make a decision. The VFW will have its own decision-making, however they make decisions as a body, and they'll have their consultant, the architect, advise them and review it, because he's, you know, he's the one who understands the documents and the bids. And then they will, they will make the decision to award, and I guess we should have another meeting when that happens, and we'll kind of have a similar motion, where they'll come up before you and say, "Well, we've chosen this," and, you know, you'll basically vote that we've followed the instructions of the state on behalf of the VFW, and we understand that, you know, the VFW will enter into this contract. And that's, and I guess we're doing that because we are, we do have administrative role as to the funds, and that supposedly will be, you know, better articulated in the revised contract that we get from the state.
The other, the other point worth noting is, is that the fee is sort of on, based on 8% of the estimated total cost of the project, and that is the threshold for the grant actually saying that it does not need to be bid for architectural services under the grant. Now, obviously, the town has more strict bidding requirements, if it's over $20,000 or $25,000.
Twenty-five.
So that's the sort of deviation, but we're meeting the requirements of the grant as far as a negotiated contract for the architectural services in this case. And, but the bidding of the, of the total value of the, of the contract for the actual construction contract will be well in excess of both the grant threshold and your threshold.
Right. Okay.
Also worth noting is, the civil is not under my oversight, so civil survey will be another direct contract, but those will fall underneath that $25,000 threshold, so those are out. You know, we've got several proposals coming back, but those will be separate contracts. I don't think need to go through this process, because they're below that threshold.
Is there any further discussion? Larry, is there anything you want to add to this? Being commander of the VFW?
I'm following all of this.
Okay.
I understand. I'm okay with it.
Okay. No further discussion? I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, you should have stayed at the table, because you and Dennis are up next. Number eight, in-house counsel, Pam Millen and Dennis Johnson, the Health Director. Consider and take possible action to authorize Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to install monitoring wells on a town-owned property located at the corner of Boston Street and Goose Lane. Morning, Dennis.
Good morning. We had a request from the Connecticut Department of Energy, Environmental Protection to install some monitoring wells on a partial town property, if you're familiar with it. It's in the corner of Boston Street and Goose Lane. It's a little triangular piece of property. It used to be the old Clappard Hill merging onto Boston Street many years ago, before the interstate was built. There's been, the reason they want to put some monitoring wells on the side is that there's been, there was a documented petroleum leak, which occurred at one of the gas stations, and this petroleum leak could potentially migrate off the property and impact neighboring property. properties. So the DEP wants to install a monitoring well on this little parcel of land owned by the town to determine the direction of these, of the pollutant plume, and also to help confirm the source of the leak, whether it's one source or multiple sources. So it's basically just to tap into the groundwater with some shallow monitoring wells and see if the pollutant is in that, on the property, which direction it's moving. And they typically ask permission from property owners to install these monitoring wells to do the sampling. I believe it's just a temporary well, it's not there permanently. They eventually will take the well out. So that's the request before the town at this point, from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection.
Pam?
Yeah. So Dennis brought this to my attention, this request, and I talked to some individuals at DEEP, some individuals that contacted Dennis initially, and also, DEEP has its own counsel within DEEP, and I spoke with an attorney, Applefield, because I had a few questions, and so I'll kind of outline what he discussed with me. You know, first of all, I would have thought, representing us, that we would want some kind of access agreement, you know, to protect us. I discussed that with the attorney, he said that, that DEEP does not enter into any access agreements, because they're not staffed to review those access agreements. So normally, you know, you'd have an access agreement that talks about, well, if you damage a property, you've got to restore it, if you do, you know, the liability issues. So that's, that was unable to obtain that. I also asked whether, you know, they can give us an insurance certificate, as we're accustomed to getting, and he said, no, because we're immune, so we don't, you know, you're not going to get any insurance from us. I also asked, you know, I'm not an environmental lawyer, and there are several federal and state laws that could apply, you know, is there any exposure for the town if they find pollutants, even if we didn't cause them? You know, what, is there any scenario where we could be held accountable to, you know, clean it up? And he said, well, that doesn't really fit your fact pattern, so I wouldn't worry about that, because we really believe it's some surrounding areas. However, you know, there is statutes that, you know, could enable DEEP to actually, you know, go after people that own property that are, that is contaminated, even if they didn't cause it. So I, you know, I, as an aside, you know, but he did emphasize, you know, that's not your fact pattern, blah, blah, you know. I would, my recommendation, if I asked, would be actually to contact an environmental lawyer and just double-check before granting access, because, again, I'm only seeing it from how DEEP is representing it to, to us, that the environmental lawyer would be able to kind of assess our environmental insurance better than I, and kind of be able to articulate the risks or no risks, you know, in doing, in granting the access. And I also asked DEEP, can we say, can we not grant the access?
Yeah.
And they said that you could, and, but we have other ways to get access. We wouldn't use those other ways through the Attorney General's office. They assured us that, you know, if you didn't grant access, we would, you know, we would not pursue our other avenues of getting access when a property owner doesn't grant us access. You know, it could be as simple as you're granting in the access for the wells, and our responsibility ends there, but I cannot tell you definitively that that's the case.
Well, I don't think our responsibility does end there. Why are they doing this? There must have been some kind of reporting or something, they don't just, what?
Well, there was a gas station there, I think it's called the Quick Stop, I don't know what it's called now, it's kind of a...
So that's why they want to see if there's...
Yeah, there was a release there a few years ago, and that release could impact neighboring properties, but they have to find out by putting monitoring wells, which way the groundwater's moving, carrying this pollutant, you know, which way is it going, who's going to be impacted in the future. But there's also two other gas stations up there, I think there's a Mobo and a Sitco, I think, you know, and whether or not they are impacted, we don't know, but this, these monitoring wells, if they're installed, they could help detect the origin of the pollutant, because the groundwater moves in different directions at this particular site.
That's what they're trying to determine. They believe that there is contamination, and they have evidence of contamination.
Okay.
They're trying to determine the source, whether it's multiple sources, in which case they would go, go after the multiple sources for the cleanup, or is it just one?
That makes it, yeah.
Yeah.
Do they specifically identify the pollutant as gasoline?
Yeah.
So that's what they're talking about, the fact pattern.
Yeah, but I agree with Pam, because I think we should let her get more information, John, I mean, I... Just to make sure we're protected, right? I agree with Pam's request, or to ask us to, you know, at least have an environmental lawyer look at this and make sure that we're protected and the process is protected, if I understand, you know.
Unfortunately, it costs us to have that review done, but it, I think the cost-benefit of that is worth...
Well, I guess...
And our citizens.
It does seem to be the quandary, as you've explained it, is if we deny it, then we end up hiring a lawyer to represent us relative to the Attorney General, so...
Yeah, no. We're not, and I don't think we should deny, well, they even say in here on the note that they don't even need our permission, like, they're just, like, so, I mean, the fact that they're working with us, or sounds like they want to work with us, I think is important, we don't want to alienate, you know, to the...
Well, you know, Gary, you do, you said, when I was thinking of it, it is quite a quandary, because we want to protect the town and the neighbors.
Correct.
And there is a, obviously, a leak, someplace.
Right.
Coming from somewhere.
Right.
And I would rather just see that leak stop and determine where it's coming from, and that wastes too much time with this, because I don't want that area contaminated.
Agreed.
That's why I don't think we should deny it, I just think...
But if this lawyer says, don't let them on there, we're going to let the ground continue to get contaminated? And we'd be liable for any, any problems, right?
I just think, the purpose of the lawyer is to tell you, yeah, here are your risks and here, you know, here, just to make sure you know fully. And what the lawyer might say is, even though DEEP says they don't enter into agreements, you should get an agreement. That's not true, they do, there is exceptions, we should get something.
But I think in the end, you're going to have to do it.
I would think, again, this is not my area, so I, with all proper disclaimers, I would think that you would grant access ultimately, and you want to solve the problem, but...
You're going to have to solve the problem.
But you kind of want to understand the potential cost to it. Maybe there's, maybe it's very minimal, but maybe it's, maybe it's not, so that would be my, my only thought on that.
Again, you know, I would suspect that, with all due respect to environmental lawyers and their qualifications, they would have very, they would have difficulty making a judgment without any additional information or sampling or whatever. So then, we'd be, we'd end up doing some sampling so that they could...
I don't know.
Make a reasonable determination, other than your question of, is this an unusual situation with the DEEP, or does the DEEP grant?
Couldn't we at least, Pam, lots of times, as you, you know, my practice is, if it's something that's touching upon an area, but, you know, I'll just inquire, just to see if I'm going in the right direction or whatever, maybe just allowing you to have a conversation with somebody, just to say, you know, make sure you're not missing anything.
Yes, before it becomes a full-blown...
Yeah, I'm not saying that, Gary, that I agree with you.
And I would probably contact the, whose name escapes me, but we used her on Boston Street.
The person that we deal on Boston Street, who was...
That was the idea, was to give a call to her.
Just, they might say, oh, no, you know, just because, they might say, oh, no, this is par for the course, and...
And that kind of, I could have that call, and then I'd get at least an idea, you know?
That's arms, yeah.
Which I can then just relay to Joe, I mean, you know, it's, that's just determining whether it makes sense to hire a lawyer any further, or whether her guidance is, that's pretty standard, and, you know, it would, your best just to cooperate at this stage, and you really don't have a risk of being...
Right, I just want to make sure we don't have any risks here.
It's really the cleanup, that's my only concern on that, is that, and so, it is what it is. If we're responsible for cleanup and any aspect of it, then that's what we are, but it's, would be good to kind of go understand that, especially when DEEP is saying, if you didn't allow us access, we probably wouldn't pursue that further, now whether we can rely on that, I don't know, because they have enough information, at least to, according to them, hold a couple of parties responsible. I think the real purpose of our access is to, because we're downgrading from another property, to determine whether it's, it's actually, you know, three sources, not two.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with a call to the person to see if there's anything that we've missed, but I, you know, we own the property, it is ours, if it is there, our liability unfortunately turns out to be what it is, having been involved in dozens of environmental cleanups in various situations. We might, you know, I don't know who owns the other properties, but we might be the deep, the deep pockets and someone, you know, we do have liability, but as Joe said, we have our citizens to be concerned about also. If our property is polluting, we do have a responsibility.
We know it's not coming from our property. We don't have wells there.
We don't think it started at our property, but it might be on our property.
Right, and I think we've got to protect the surrounding properties. I'm inclined to let them, to let DEEP put their wells there, but I also would like to have Pam have a conversation with an environmental lawyer to understand what our liabilities are.
I agree with you, John.
You could vote yes, and just subject to my conversation.
Yeah.
And if something arises, then I'll come back to you, otherwise...
Unless some red flag is right...
Yeah, otherwise, you can go forward.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that, Joe.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, so, you making that motion, Gary?
Yes.
Second it.
Did you get that, Karen?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Unanimous, thank you, Pam. All right, we're up to item nine, discuss take possible action to set an annual town meeting. Date for Monday, May 11, 2015, at 7:00 PM, in the Guilford Town Hall at 31 Park Street, that would be this room. Let's move it.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. We have two proclamations to vote upon. One is, we'd like to keep a little bit confidential, if you can imagine. Do I have a motion to approve both proclamations?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, requests for the use of town property, we now have 11.1 to 11.8, if we take into consideration the two additions we made at the beginning of the meeting.
I would move that we approve the request for use and signage as presented in the amended agenda, all eight of them.
That's a motion made, that's a motion seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask the board's consideration to jump to 18 for appointments and resignations, and then we'll go back to the regular agenda, since if the town committees, both town committees, Republicans and Democrats, I'm going to treat them both fairly here, get their acts together, get this stuff in, before we put the agenda together. Do I have a motion to move 18 up?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we'll start with 18.1, appointment of Ed Mead as an alternate to the Shellfish Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire February 28, 2016.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Reappointment of Matthew Josephs to the Economic Development Commission for a term to expire November 30, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reappointment of Shelley Green to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire February 28, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reappointment to Barbara Finelli to the Zoning Board of Appeal for a term to expire February 28, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And appointment of Susannah Smith to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire January 31, 2020.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, moving right along to, back to item 12, correspondence, 12.1, Public Works Department Monthly Report, and this should be 20, 12.2, Building Officials Monthly Report. Okay?
Building officials.
Okay, I see the building official is quite busy, you can see from his finance report. Committee reports, you want to...
Yep, we have the Guilford Cleanup Day coming up on May 2nd, Saturday. We will be on the green from 8 to 2 with bags, gloves, maps, and areas in Guilford that need extra attention and cleanup. We're also going to be having special areas with the Guilford Land Trust, and we're calling those competition zones, that if you choose to clean up those areas and fill bags, you can win some prizes. There'll also be food available for the volunteers during the course of the day, so we encourage you, all of you, to come out and please help us clean up Guilford after this horrible winter. Our town could really use some beautification, so thank you.
Bring some broom to sweep the sand up there. It's a big job picking up all that sand. Okay.
Another committee report.
Yep, Gary?
May 16, the Energy Task Force is unveiling its electric charging station, which actually exists out there, that last I heard, they had contracted at least, or contacted at least, eight suppliers of electric vehicles, which will be on-site and displaying their wares and so on, so everybody is invited that specifically, and I will be out of town, but I would hope that some representation from the Board of Selectmen...
What time, Gary?
Uh, I think it's, I think it's like all day, so I will get a time for when the ceremonies will take place, because I think the cars are going to be there all day for people to look at and wander around and see, but...
Yeah, I could try to be there.
It's a pretty exciting event.
Yeah.
It'll be very, very interesting, so...
Will that be operable prior to the 16th?
I think so.
Are you going to wait until...
The person that, we were supposed to have a meeting last week, and someone was supposed to show us how to operate it, and unfortunately, he had a death in the family and wasn't there, so we're waiting for instructions from the installer, and I don't know that that's been, a date has been established yet, because of, because of the death in the family, so. We'll put that on the website or let people know.
We will, yeah, if it's ready to use, okay.
Also would, would ask any members of the media that happen to see this, that want to show up for that event, would be appreciated by the Energy Task Force.
That can coincide with the event on the green, the raise the roof.
Correct.
So there'll be a lot of activity that day anyway, so...
Correct.
A lot of people around. Anything else, committee reports on all business, the only thing I have is to remind seniors who haven't reapplied or applied for the tax freeze program, you have until May 15, which is the deadline to apply in the assessor's office. If you don't apply or reapply by May 15, you will not be eligible for the program and could be subject to having your taxes go up. So if you want your taxes frozen, please apply by May 15. That's all I have, anybody else?
I would just make one other editorial comment. I had a conversation with a couple of our Public Works employees last week, who were doing some work in my neighborhood, and they kind of commented that occasionally residents are less than kind in their comments to the Public Works employees, they're doing their job, it may not be the job that a particular resident wants them to do on a given day, but they have multiple tasks that they're working on, they work very hard. I mean, the other comment is, you know, they're allowed a coffee break, they're allowed a lunch break, and rather than drive from North Guilford back to their home base, you know, 20 minutes back to have a lunch break, they have it in their truck sitting on the side of the road, and that's permissible, I mean, we all deserve a lunch, or we... So I would ask that our people understand that... So, I would ask that our people understand that these folks work very hard, they're doing their best. In some cases, they would like to do more, but they don't have the time or the equipment or the resources. They really are dedicated people, so I would ask for a certain amount of courtesy to be extended to them.
And, good point. And I agree, Gary. And the other thing is, two things. These guys have worked extremely hard this past winter to the point of exhaustion in certain cases. And, believe me, if they're having a break on the side of the road, it's a lot more efficient than going back to the garage and then going back out again.
Absolutely.
I'm glad you brought that up. Any new business?
Want to mention about the referendum?
By the time this takes place, I hope, I hope we're...
Want to thank everybody for voting.
Yeah. But Select and Ball Tracy just had to mention the referendum. This tape is being taped on Monday, the 20th. The referendum is the 21st. As of this day, it'd be tomorrow, but I don't know when this one's going to play, so hopefully you voted, okay? Public forum, I don't see anybody wishing to address the board. Item 17, discuss and take possible action on deputy chief's contract. Executive session is required. I'm going to call for a vote to go into executive session. I'm going to invite Attorney Dorney, the Chairman of the Police Commission, Jeff Hepburn, and our Finance Director, Shiva Valano. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mike will be coming back for a vote, okay? Need a motion to command executive session?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any, another motion?
Sure, I'll move that we approve the deputy police chief's contract as presented.
Is there a second? Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie, you had it.
I oppose, not because I oppose the deputy chief. I think he's a wonderful selection, but there's a provision in the contract under Section 4, Subsection 3 regarding vacation policy, which I have consistently objected to in contracts such as these, which I had hoped would be changed. And I don't, I'm being, I consistently believe that that shouldn't be there, so for that reason, I am voting against this contract at this time.
Okay. Vote is three, two, one. See no further business. I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Oh, wait, do we need to vote?
We have to vote on it. Oh, I thought we did.
Oh, we did.
We did. Oh, yeah. It was three to one. Need a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned at 10:01. Thank you all.
I'm sorry, usually, I'm sorry, I usually... There's studies, Gary, lots of the commercial, like the parks and everything have done, and they actually have higher revenue sales in it. That's why I'm, like, people don't want to go up to somebody, per se. They'd rather go up to the machine. Yeah.
Item nine, consider and take possible action on the resolution for the Small Cities Program. This is in relation to the public hearing that we had at the beginning of the meeting. And you see in front of you the resolution?
I would move that we approve the resolution for the Small Cities Program, endorse the work of the, of the Housing Authority, and authorize the first selectmen to sign.
Second.
Second. Is it the clerk? I guess the clerk has to sign, not the first selectman, right? If I read the piece of paper correctly.
That's correct.
Authorize the clerk, town clerk, to sign.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. Thank you. Are you all set, folks? Yeah? Item 10, appointments and resignations. 10 dot 1, act on a recommendation to appoint Richard Hudson as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire February 28, 2019. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Request 11, request for the use of town properties, 11 dot 1 to 11 dot 5. Trace, did you have a...
Okay, I sent the information to Tom.
Okay.
Put up the mails.
All right. There was one of the, before, Gary, before you want to make a motion, there was one of the applicants, which is 11 dot 1, South Central Child Advisory Center. They wanted to put pinwheels.